Federal action by the United States government Cities for SEDAW was launched at the United Nations Commission on the Status of Women in March 2014. In June 2014, a resolution at the U.S. Conference of Mayors was passed urging cities across the United States to participate in the Cities for SEDAW initiative by passing resolutions and ordinances implementing the principles of SEDAW, which resolution was passed unanimously. And whereas city governments have an appropriate and legitimate role to affirm the importance of principles of equality embodied in the treaty, promote the establishment of fair public policy to elevate community norms, and whereas SEDAW provides a comprehensive framework for governments to examine policies and practices in relation to women and girls, and whereas although women have made major gains in the struggle for equality in many spheres of community life, working women in the state of Utah still do not receive equal pay for equal work. And whereas the Salt Lake City Human Rights Commission in its 2013 Status of Women in Salt Lake City report identified other disparities, including those in education, health and safety, politics, social life and economics, and recommended initiatives focused on addressing those disparities. And whereas Salt Lake City government is committed to eliminating all forms of inequality against women and girls, eliminating violence against women and girls, promoting the health and safety of women and girls, and affording equal academic, economic and political opportunities to women and girls in Salt Lake City. And whereas a local SEDAW ordinance seeks three standards: a gender analysis of city departments and commissions, an advisory board to advocate and inform appropriate and timely actions, and thirdly, a funding to support the implementation of the principles of SEDAW. Now therefore be it resolved that the Salt Lake City Council and mayor of Salt Lake City encourage and support Salt Lake City's participation in the Cities for SEDAW initiative and the passage of local resolutions reflecting the principles of SEDAW, and we have all signed this document. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mendenhall. I will now look to entertain a motion regarding the minutes of Tuesday, February 2nd work session, the Tuesday, February 16th work session, and the Tuesday, March 1st work session and formal meetings.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Mendenhall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move to our potential action items under B on the agenda. The first is B1 amend the major street plan for proposed road at 5700 West between California Avenue and 2100 South. I will look for a motion. Still looking.
I'll make a motion. I move the council adopt an ordinance to amend the major street plan of Salt Lake City transportation master plan to remove a proposed collector's street located at 5700 West between California Avenue and 2100 South Street, Frontage Road.
Second.
Great. Motion by Councilmember Johnson.
Johnson.
Johnson, thank you. I was thinking Councilmember Andrews. Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Penfold. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving to B2, the ordinance confirming assessments and enacting levy in central business assessment area 16.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. And the number B3 on the agenda, Budget Amendment Number Two, Fiscal Year 2015-2016 Revision Number One.
Mr. Chair, I move the council to close Budget Amendment Number Two without further amendments to the final budget of Salt Lake City for fiscal year 2015 and 2016.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Mendenhall. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move to Item C on our agenda, the public hearings. For those of you who are here to speak to some of these specific public hearings, be sure to listen to the ones that we call out. We'll take each one individually. If you are here to talk about the police issue, that will come up later in the agenda, but everyone will have their opportunity to speak. So the first public hearing is regarding the permitted and conditional uses for manufacturing districts. I have one card, I believe, on this one from Brian Kopiak. Brian, are you here to speak on this issue? Okay. So what we ask, come up to the podium, please. For those in the audience, we ask that you don't clap, cheer for any of the public comments. We want to make sure that everyone is comfortable speaking regardless of, you know, your agreement or disagreement with what they have to say. So in advance of that, thank you, and turn the time over to Mr. Kopiak.
Thank you. Thank you, and appreciate the opportunity to speak in this matter. My name is Brian Kopiak, and I'm the Director of Operations of La Bus Motor Coaches. This is my family's business, and we've been operating on 542 DeLonge Street for close to 30 years. We're a transportation company that does charters and tours and all sorts of transportation. We purchased some land across the street so that we can continue to grow our fleet, and we found out that we needed to amend the, an amendment for the zone so that we could have a bus yard in this area. We operate vehicles that are similar to trucks. There's all sorts of truck yards in our neighborhood with the same diesel engines. We now have 25 motor coaches that are a mission that meets the California standards. It cost us about a half a million dollars to purchase a new coach, and we're on a good track to push forward with the Go Green on that effort. We do all the transportation in this area for University of Utah, the NBA teams, Major League Soccer, all the Pac-12 teams that come into town. Several of our competitors have moved their fleets into Las Vegas, and so it's allowed for us to take over more contracts, and we're just very short on employee parking and bus parking. So all we're really looking for is to park buses and park, have employee parking across the street from where we currently operate on 542 DeLonge Street. We do a lot of good things for the community. We donated some transportation for the officer that passed away here just recently. We do a lot of sub persona stuff. We really don't want to have to move outside of Salt Lake City. It's a great location for us. It's close to the airport, close to downtown, and we're just hoping that this is very important for our business to be able to use this, this land across the street for, like I said, employee parking and bus parking. We're not going to be doing any sorts of maintenance on there whatsoever. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kopiak. Would anyone else like to speak to the permitted and conditional uses for manufacturing districts? Seeing no further public comment, I'll go to Councilmember Kitchen.
Yeah, I move that we suspend the rules and adopt tonight.
Second.
Oh, excuse me.
Okay.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Kitchen to close the public hearing, suspend the rules and adopt the ordinance, and second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion to this item? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The second public hearing that we have tonight is, are the changes to various boards and commissions' operations. I have two cards for this public hearing. If anyone else would like to speak to this, just, there are staff members on both sides that can, they can give you a card. The two names that I have, Michael Iverson, if you can come up to the podium, followed by Ryan Parker.
Thank you. Michael Iverson, Chair of the Central City Neighborhood Council in District Four. I wanted to encourage the council to consider increasing the radius for notices about zoning changes, master plan changes, et cetera, and so that we can have greater participation at our, at our open houses and at our planning commission meetings and our historic landmark meetings. 300 feet is less than one city block in Salt Lake. If you've got a big business on a street and you send out a notice, 300 feet radius, it might be one or two notices, so hopefully consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iverson. Ryan Parker. Is Mr. Parker here?
Hello, Councilman. I'm, I was actually here to speak in regards to the Police Review Board.
Okay, so what we'll do if, so let us, save your comments, and then when we get to the general public comment, then everyone will, everyone will have the opportunity to speak to that.
Excuse me, this is also like a recommendation for the changes, the revisions to the Police Civilian Review Board.
Okay, yeah, and you can do, so we can do that during the, during the other. So, well wait, so, no, if you're going to be talking about the changes of the civilian review board, you can do that during this board and commission's operations.
Doing this right now? Okay. Well, I'd like to thank everyone for, you know, for putting this together. First time speaking to boards of council, so give me a moment. So I have very, very few limited time, so it's going to be quick. I'm a constituent in over in District Three here in the city of Salt Lake City, and all I have is just what obviously, obviously would be the best solution to the civilian review board. You'll hear a lot of things tonight about how we need a community review board and all that, but if you look at it, we have one, but most people feel that it's not very, it's not ran very well. So I will go ahead and hand these out to you for your consideration. My first one, would I just go based on what I feel my recommendations are to the changes of the review board?
Yeah, you have just two minutes and say whatever you need to.
So my first one to the Police Civilian Review Board, I feel meetings should be held once a month instead of a quarterly basis with the excessive force complaints that goes to show that there is merit that needs to be held more than just every three months. In cases of emergencies such as the shooting or any other type of police shooting using deadly force, whether it be used to kill, maim or injure, emergency meetings will be held the next, next following day. Also, the members, board is to be comprised of six civilians and one investigative administrator. Members may be appointed by city council, mayor, or recommended by a majority of citizens. Members may serve two-year terms and may be reappointed at the following body's discretion. Members who have been convicted of felony or misdemeanor crimes are still eligible, but shall be screened based on crime disposition outcome and serving board members' approval along with mayor and citizen consent. Next, committee responsibilities, the board is to be involved in a joint effort with LCPD Internal Sanvarity Unit during an investigation, not after, during a complaint. The board has the authority to subpoena any and all evidence and accused officers as part of an investigation. Any subpoenaed officers are compelled to appear before the board to make a statement. Any individual who refuses to appear or make a statement after being subpoenaed by the board is subject to disciplinary action by the committee as well as possible criminal charges such as contempt and/or interfering with an investigation as long as the individual has not been denied their Fifth Amendment right. After reviewing all the findings in this complaint, the board will render its decision. Was I, am I out of my time?
Just, yeah, just finish up your thought.
My thoughts, ladies and gentlemen, right here. The outlined body is a basic foundation for a successful and productive board, the purpose to protect the safety of the citizens of Salt Lake City and uphold the integrity of the Salt Lake City Police Department with the use of educated and unbiased disciplinary action. In layman's terms, the board we have is not working. These are guidelines to help make it work. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Mr. Chair. Oh, Mr. Parker.
Please, again, again, no clapping. No clapping or comments, that's out of order. We ask that you respect the rules of this body, please. Councilmember Penfold.
I was going to ask Mr. Parker for copies, and he has distributed those, so I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further cards on this issue, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing and defer action to a future council meeting.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion to this issue? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next public hearing is Budget Item Number Three for fiscal year 2015 and 2016. I have two cards related to this budget issue. Actually, one card related to this one, then the other card from Al Khalife. I'm going to have you speak during the general comments. So this card is for George Chapman. Mr. Chapman?
Hi, I'm George Chapman. Councilmembers, I have a problem with the fund balance. This city looks like it's in the worst financial shape in the last 20 years. We only have about a 10% fund balance. I remember when Rocky took over, he gave up his seat to Ralph Becker, it was 17%. Now we're at the lowest we've ever been in 20 years. This is serious. This is going to cost the taxpayers with higher interest rates. I'm also concerned about A11, the Nine South off-ramp because UDOT's redoing a bridge there, and I hope somebody from the city is talking to UDOT because the $70,000 is a waste of money if they've already let the contract. The A13 BRT study doesn't make sense because why would you want a BRT when you can tell right now whether or not a BRT can work on Redwood Road? And on the Hive Pass, I am very disappointed in the Hive Pass, number of people, 1,305. I have a suggestion. Because the Senior Pass is less than the Hive Pass, why don't you get all those seniors that love mass transit to, and fund them with a lower-cost Senior Pass? Their Senior Pass right now is less than the Hive Pass. You want more people on mass transit? You don't want seniors driving with their old cars? Fund a Hive Pass for seniors. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Chapman, seeing, having no further cards on this issue, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we close this public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold to close the public hearing, second by Councilmember Mendenhall. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our final agenda, public hearing tonight, is regarding the Item Number Four, the One-Year Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant and Other Federal Grants for Fiscal Year 2016-2017. I have a number of cards here. I'm going to read two names, have the first person come to the podium, the second person just be ready. As soon as the person at the podium finishes speaking, I will call out another name so that you can be ready to move forward as quickly as possible. Everyone has two minutes. Again, no clapping, jeering, cheering, or any sort of outburst from, from the crowd, please. Omar Hernandez, followed by Roger Borgenick.
Mr. Chair, are the item numbers listed on your cards? And I'm wondering if you could also reference those when we...
There are, so what I can do, I will do that. So for Omar Hernandez, Mr. Hernandez here, okay, come up to the podium to speak. Mr. Hernandez is going to be speaking on CDBG on Page Two, Number Three, Page Five, Number One, and under the Home Grant, Page One, Number Three, and Page One, Number Four. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm just here to voice my story of the impact that the LIF program has done for me. The LIF program, as you guys may know, it's the, it was implemented by Wells Fargo and distributed by nonprofit organizations such as Neighbor Works Salt Lake. I'm a member of Rose Park, have lived in the Fairgrounds community, and just last, last year I bought my first home thanks to this program, and, I mean, it's, it was one of the most emotional things I could, I've ever gone through. But my, my story and the impact that it's done for me, it's made me think at a, at a bigger level, and not just for me, but for, for friends of mine as well that went through this program. They, you know, it was just not, it was not just for homes, it was also for condos. I mean, it's such, such a big impact to the community and the, just the local economics as well. I'm here to, for you to, to consider implementing a program for grants through Neighbor Works to have more programs like this, to impact more families. It seems like priorities are up in the air right now. People are having kids before they're having a stable foundation, and that's, that's a concern of mine, especially with, you know, I see it every day with my family as well. My family's, my siblings having kids and, you know, living in an apartment or living at their home, at my mom's. You know, I'm one of the lucky ones, and I definitely want more opportunities like this for, for people in the neighborhood, in my community as well. So thank you, and I hope you consider it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hernandez. Roger Borgenick, followed by Diane Hartz Warsaw. Mr. Borgenick, Borgenick is going to speak about CDBG, Page Two, Number One.
Thank you very much, Council and Mayor and Citizens Committee. I'm the Director of Assist, which is a nonprofit community design center, actually one of the first formed in the country by the American Institute of Architects and the University of Utah College of Architecture back in 1969. And we run three major programs, housing being the most critical component of community design. We run an emergency home repair program for very low-income households to make critical repairs on their homes. And typically in Salt Lake City, we do over 200 repairs each year for people whose average income is 30% of the area median. Last year, that was $1,400 per household per month. Secondly, we do accessibility assessment and design for people with disabilities to help figure out practical modifications in their homes as they age or need to live safely and independently, and practical modifications includes affordability of that modification. We have a new initiative, the Aging in Place Initiative, to help people as they age so that infirmities don't become future disabilities, mainly to prevent falls in the homes, that is in, in stairways and bathrooms, because once someone falls in their homes, in their home, they are forever fearful. We also do community design work for nonprofit and community groups at early stages of project development when they do not have funds, in a sense, we're the architectural equivalent of legal aid. So I thank the opportunity and the support by the city. I do recognize that there was a reduction in funds proposed, and I'm fearful that that would affect our Aging in Place Initiative, so I would ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borgenick. Diane Hartz Warsaw, followed by Lanny Kai Egertson-Gough. Ms. Warsaw is going to speak about CDBG, Page Two, Number Two, and Home, Page One, Number Two. And if any, if any of the speakers have information that they would like to hand out to the council members, please hand it to one of our staff on either side, and they will pass it to the council for you. Ms. Warsaw.
Thank you very much. I am Diane Hartz Warsaw, the CEO of the Community Development Corporation of Utah. Thank you very much for providing me with this opportunity this evening. CDCU greatly appreciates our 25-year relationship with Salt Lake City, and while we recognize that the current focus is on reducing homelessness, there's a continuing need to provide the means for affordable housing for low to moderate income residents of Salt Lake City. In addition to providing affordable rental housing, the city should continue to provide support for populations at or below the area median income to become responsible homeowners. More homes are being priced out of affordable ranges, and CDCU's programs help create affordable and livable housing stock in Salt Lake City, opening up opportunities for low to moderate income families to move along the path to homeownership and freeing up additional supportive housing for the homeless population. Home funding provides down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers in Salt Lake City. In 2015, CDCU provided this assistance to 15 families and would recapture and return to the city nearly $76,000 from either the sale or refinance of the homes that received the support. If CDCU were to receive the full $125,000 requested, we could provide the down payment assistance to 25 families, whereas the $75,000 recommended will assist 15 families to become homeowners. CDBG funding allows CDCU to administer the down payment assistance program as well as our other efforts to develop and maintain affordable housing stock within Salt Lake City, particularly to low and moderate income neighborhoods. By providing holistic services to low to moderate income families, helping them to become successful homeowners, CDCU's partnership with Salt Lake City on programs for permanent owner occupied housing will also leverage pride of ownership, revitalize communities, and decrease crime rates in low to moderate income neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Warsaw. Lanny Kai Egertson-Gough, followed by Marty Wolford. Ms. Egertson-Gough is going to speak about CDBG, Page Three, Number One, Page Three, Number Two, Page Three, Number Three, and CDBG, Page Three, Number Four, and Page Three, Number Five.
Thank you. Covering all those. Good evening, Chair, Council. I'm Lanny Egertson-Gough. I work in the Engineering Division for Salt Lake City. With the administration team, we provide support for many departments and all public way projects, including contracts, permits, procurement, budget, civic engagement, public relations, capital improvement programs, environmental and planning support. The projects, projects for which Salt Lake City Engineering has requested funding include necessary upgrades and repairs to Americans with Disabilities Act ramps and sidewalks, and three projects, including short stretches of roadways. As you can see in the summary provided to you, we understand there is a funding request for projects that total much more than the available funds can cover. The board recommended funding Fremont based on limited funds to be split between all that we asked for. The board did not recommend funding of Glendale Project, however, the mayor did recommend it. All of our projects provide connectivity and safe passage for the neighborhoods as well as adhering to federal ADA standards for our community. We see these types of infrastructure projects as benefiting all Salt Lake City residents. The Glendale Project includes pavement restoration, curb, gutter and drainage improvements as well as sidewalk repairs. We respectfully request your approval of the Community Economic Development Department Engineering Project Priorities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Egertson-Gough. Marty Wolford, followed by Brian Tenetti. Ms. Wolford is going to speak about CDBG, Page Four, Number One.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marty Wolford, and I'm with the Poplar Grove Community Council. Thank you for hearing our proposals tonight, so much appreciated. Poplar Grove, if you don't know, is on the west side of Salt Lake City between 950 South and North Temple. Within our neighborhood is the Jordan River Parkway and the Nine Line. The Nine Line is located about 950 South, running from 700 West to Redwood Road. These two trails are huge assets to our neighborhood. They bring people to our community, and people get outside, they recreate, they ride their bikes, they jog, they walk, they walk their dogs. The Jordan River Parkway, like I said, is a great place to run or walk a dog. Unfortunately, not a lot of dog owners always pick up after their dogs, and it can be very unsightly with dog waste every 10 steps or so on the stretch that goes in our neighborhood. And the Nine Line replaced train tracks a few years back that ran east to west, and that trail's a major up and coming asset to our neighborhood, but right now it's just a paved trail. There's no landscaping, there's no benches, there's no trash cans, no recycling or bag waste dispensers. So what we need in our neighborhood is, what we're asking for is $25,000 to provide trail amenities like benches, waste receptacles, trash and recycling, and dog waste bag dispensers. So the dog waste bag dispensers would be along the Jordan River, and then everything else would be on the Nine Line, which will just add to the beauty that is so possible there. And Salt Lake City Parks has said that they will maintain the refilling of the dog bags for us already, and, yeah, we ask that you support this and help us build. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Wolford. Brian Tenetti, followed by Luanne Saldebar. Brian, sorry, Brian is going to speak about CDBG, Page Four, Numbers Two, Three and Four.
Hi, my name is Brian Tenetti, and I am the co-director and founder of the Seven Canyons Trust, and we are a brand-new nonprofit working to daylight and rehabilitate the Seven Canyon Creeks from City Creek to Little Cottonwood Creek, restoring beauty and health to the hydrology of the Salt Lake Valley. And we're here to urge you to support the allocated funding to Three Creeks Park, which is the combined confluence of Redview Emigration and Parley's Creeks. And this, this project was originally envisioned in our 100 Years of Daylighting Plan, and Salt Lake City has since championed the project by receiving its, its prior CDBG funds for the initial planning and design. And the... And the daylighting of this historic confluence would mark the first time residents here would see water since the 1983 floods, and beyond that, at the turn of the century, the 20th century, when these creeks were buried. And this project would improve water quality by slowing down stormwater and allowing it to infiltrate into the ground. This project would provide a key connection to nearby Sorenson Unity Center, to the 45-mile Jordan River Parkway, and 200 miles of trail beyond that. This project would create a living laboratory for the center and other educational institutions to create the next scientists and stewards. And finally, this project would undo our past mistakes and mark the first step towards daylighting over 21 miles of buried creek throughout the Salt Lake Valley. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tenetti. Leanne Saldivar, followed by Jose Lazaro. Leanne is going to speak about CDBG, page six, number four.
Hi, good evening. My name's Leanne Saldivar. I'm CEO of Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Salt Lake. I'm delighted to have the opportunity to address the council and our new mayor this evening. Our proposal tonight focuses on the target neighborhood of Poplar Grove. Since 1994, the Boys and Girls Club has been providing critical service for the most at-risk kids in this neighborhood. In particular, our academic success programs are making sure our kids are reading on grade level and graduating from high school on time with a plan for the future. We have, however, struggled to keep up with the rapid pace of developments in technology to keep our digital programs relevant and engaging for our kids and prepare them for self-sufficiency in a 21st-century workforce. Our proposal in front of you this evening is for approximately $35,000 to do three things. First, to support the wages of a part-time, dedicated technology instructor at the club. Second, to establish campus Wi-Fi. And third, to upgrade some of our aging infrastructure and hardware at the club. We're delighted that the Board and Mayor have recommended partial funding for this project, but partial funding leaves us with kind of an impossible choice. We can either support high-quality instruction without the adequate tools, or we can support the tools without the teacher. We believe that to deliver the full impact of this program, we really need both, and I would respectfully request that the council consider funding this project at the full level. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saldivar. Jose Lazaro, followed by Stephanie McKay.
Good evening. My name is Jose Lazaro, Development Director for Catholic Community Services of Utah. I'd like to thank the council and the mayor for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to speak in favor of the mayor's recommendation to fund the Wiggins Homeless Resource Center. These essential funds will ensure that the center's essential services continue to our homeless friends. Each day, we have approximately 500 individuals pass through the center. I invite the members from this council to come and take a tour of our facility to see how the city's investment is making a difference in our community. I'm grateful for the ongoing support we receive, and I hope to continue this partnership well into the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lazaro. Stephanie McKay, followed by Kathy Barnhart. Stephanie is going to speak about CDBG, page six, number six.
Hi, I'm Stephanie McKay with Columbus Community Center and the Development Director. I think most of you know, but quickly, I'll tell you. Columbus Community Center serves individuals with disabilities. We've been doing that since 1968, and we serve about 450 individuals, and we've been very pleased that the council and the mayor have given us some wonderful support for our Columbus Production Services out on the west side of Salt Lake, where we employ 90 people with disabilities. We're so grateful for your recommendation for funding for our community employment expansion project. It'll focus specifically on young adults with autism. We have the second-highest rate of autism in the country, and the disturbing statistic is that young adults leaving public education are facing an 80% unemployment rate, anywhere from two to four years after they leave public education. Our program is being done in partnership with the University of Utah Neurosafety Program and an internationally-recognized nonprofit called Specialist Ternay. Since we've submitted the application, we've completed a number of pilot projects, including involvement with many students from the Salt Lake City School District. We're really excited about pulling this program together to offer pre-vocational, vocational training and onboarding in local businesses, and we've had a lot of great conversations with companies who are really interested in this population. There's been some international work that shows that young adults with autism do very well in the IT industry, and we're very, very excited to be one of the first nonprofits in Utah and in the country that will have this kind of program that's targeted to this young adult population. So thank you for your recommendation. Thank you all for being here, and I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Kathy Barnhart, followed by Bonnie Peters, and Ms. Barnhart is going to speak about CDBG, page seven, number 10.
Thank you. The English Skills Learning Center, for those of you who don't know, provides free and accessible English as a second language instruction to over 800 adults living in Salt Lake City and county. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council members for your past support of this work, especially this past year's funding for our job readiness program, which empowers immigrant and refugees with the English skills needed to find and keep employment. We teach both the language skills to complete an application and participate in a job interview, as well as the cultural expectations of work in America. Working with our key partners and caseworkers at DWS and the YWCA, participants have been successful in finding sustainable employment. We're using iPads to teach adults how to search for jobs and apply for jobs online. We've even adapted this curriculum to teach refugee women how to become licensed to provide in-home childcare for the children of their communities. We understand the constraints of not having enough funds, particularly this year, to meet every funding request, but we respectfully request that if additional funding were to become available, that this program could be considered for continued support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barnhart. Bonnie Peters, followed by Sean McMillan. Ms. Peters is going to speak about CDBG, page seven, number 11.
Well, wouldn't you know it, I forgot my paper, so I'm just going to go from scratch. Thank you so much to the council and to the mayor for letting me be here tonight. I'm here to talk about the Family Support Center. The Family Support Center, I am the Executive Director, and we have been open for 39 years. We provide several services to people, to families. The main one I'm going to speak about tonight is our Crisis Nurseries. And it's, the one we have right here in the valley is at 2020 South Lake Street. So people can bring their children to these crisis nurseries free of charge, and we will take care of them. Reasons that parents do this are for things such as homelessness. We've had 159 homeless children in our nurseries just in the past couple months. Medical appointments, and also for stress breaks. And this helps kids from getting hurt and getting killed, and so we're happy to be able to do that. What our concern is, is though we have been doing this for a long time, and we've demonstrated good reasons for what we do, there were over 61,000 hours of service provided last year by our crisis nurseries in this valley. So I respectfully ask that our funding be restored. We have been helped by Salt Lake City for many, many years through the CDBG, and so this is such a vulnerable population. And again, our mission is to protect children, strengthen families, and prevent child abuse. So I, again, I'm asking if you would please restore our funding so that we can continue to serve these children. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Sean McMillan, followed by Richard Pater, and Mr. McMillan is going to speak about CDBG, page seven, number 12.
Thank you. My name is Sean McMillan. I'm the Executive Director of First Step House. First Step House is a substance use treatment provider that's been serving this community since 1958. We have facilities located in the Fair Park neighborhood and in the Central City neighborhood. We provide residential, outpatient, and transitional housing for adult males struggling with high severity substance use disorder. I'm here today because I want to thank the Citizens Board and Mayor Biscupsi for the recommendation to support the First Step House Peer Support Services Program. Our program is innovative in that it seeks to not only engage individuals in clinical services, but also assertively support and link people to resources in the community that promote recovery and stability. Our program is well-aligned with other community initiatives that seek to address substance use disorder, homelessness, and the cycle of incarceration. Again, we thank the Citizens Board and the mayor for your support for our request, and ask that the council also forward that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Richard Pater, followed by Lisa Heaton. Mr. Pater is going to speak about CDBG, page seven, number 13.
My name is Richard Pater, and I'm the CEO and Executive Director of the Guadalupe School. For over 50 years, the Guadalupe School has served families of poverty in the city of Salt Lake. We at the Guadalupe School believe the surest path to break that cycle of poverty is through education. And to that light, we have our five programs that seek to attack the problem at its very root. Those programs are, the first three make up what we call our Early Learning Center. Our first program is our in-home program, where clients, when they find out they're going to have a child, have the opportunity to get involved with our program, and we have counselors that meet with them every week and basically counsel them on making sure that the home is a safe place for their child, that they're getting the nourishment they need, and the prenatal care that they need. That continues until the child is two years old, and they have the opportunity to get involved with our second program, which is our Toddler Beginning Program. In the Toddler Beginning Program, parents and children have the opportunity to come into school and start to meet the other children that they're going to spend the next 12 years together with. As you can imagine, in a world of poverty, not all homes are a safe place for children to live. It is paramount that children understand that school is a safe place. A third of our programs in our Early Learning Center is preschool. We also have a charter school, and then an adult learning center as well. The funding we've requested goes to our Toddler Beginning Program. It took us 12 years, but recently, the Guadalupe School was able to build a new building that doubled the size of the number of families we can serve. We've been able to increase the number of students within our charter school. We are now looking to increase the number of students that we serve in our Early Learning Center. The funding we've requested would help us move to the point where we can bring enough students through the beginning part of the program, that they can benefit from what we serve.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pater. Lisa Heaton, followed by Mircha DeVrieschen. Ms. Heaton is going to speak about CDBG, page eight, number 15.
My name is Lisa Heaton, and I'm acting as the interim Director of House of Hope. And when you look at all these programs, it makes me proud to be in Salt Lake City. There are a lot of very valuable programs here. House of Hope has been in Salt Lake since 1946, so this is our 70th year, and we're very proud of that. And the funding that we're requesting is for the Hope Center for Children, which is a division of House of Hope that provides services for kids zero to eight years old. A lot of people don't realize that when the division steps in and needs to remove children from moms who have substance use disorders, that they need treatment in order to get the children back, and yet they lose their Medicaid at that point, and so they're unable to get treatment. The Hope Center for Children allows children to stay with their moms, so the moms can get treatment, and the kids can get therapy and services at the same time. We had 145 families last year, and there were 87 of those families that obtained reunification in that first year. It prevents the kids from going into foster care and additional funding issues. Our funding has been cut dramatically as Medicaid changes have happened, and so we are struggling every year to try to keep children with their moms and provide them the services that they need at the Hope Center for Children. So I thank you for your consideration of the council and the mayor, and for helping us, not just this year, but the last 70 years as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heaton. Mircha DeVrieschen, followed by Kaylee Richards. Mr. DeVrieschen will speak about CDBG, page eight, number 16.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Mircha, and I'm the CEO of Camp Costopolis, located just up in Emigration Canyon. Been around for over 50 years. Our mission all this time has been to improve the quality of life for people with disabilities, through education, recreation, and growth opportunities. We are one of the most inclusive facilities that serves people with disabilities. We serve ages four to 99, both cognitive disabilities and physical disabilities. Our services are geared toward building confidence, teaching social skills, and adaptability. We push for inclusion. We believe that people with disabilities have the same, should have the same abilities that we do to participate in employment and have full, meaningful lives. There are 56 million people with disabilities in the United States. That's 19% of our population. Unemployment for people with all abilities, it's about 86%. For people with disabilities, it's at 14%. We can do a lot to move that needle up and give them an opportunity to live a full, meaningful lives in our communities. We did not get recommended for support. We would love support for our programs. We have a rich relationship with the city, and invite you guys all to come and visit with us and learn more about our programs and how we can make a deeper impact on our communities. We have several different programs, and part of the programs that we provide also provides the much-needed respite for people that care for somebody with a disability 24/7, 24 hours, seven days a week. So thank you very much for this opportunity, again.
Thank you, Mr. DeVrieschen. Kaylee Richards, followed by Kaylee Bonner. Ms. Richards is going to speak about CDBG, page eight, number 17.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Kaylee Richards, and I'm the Program Director for Salt Lake Peer Court, which is a program of law-related education. With me are a few of my volunteers. I got high schoolers to come to a city council hearing. I think that's worth full funding right there, just pointing out. Salt Lake Peer Court offers a restorative justice alternative approach to juvenile justice in which cases of youth offenders are adjudicated by a panel of their peers. Trained high school volunteers conduct court hearings and develop dispositions, what we call sentences, which encourage referred youth to take accountability for their actions and participate in pro-social, community-based programs. This intervention is followed by ongoing peer-to-peer mentoring. Volunteers provide weekly support and guidance for referred youth as they complete their dispositions. Salt Lake Peer Court is a free program for all participants. Youth who are successful in Peer Court do not receive a criminal record. So far this academic year, Salt Lake Peer Court has processed over 200 cases, and volunteers have provided more than 8,000 hours of service. While the volunteers with me will speak about their experience with Peer Court, the voices of those we serve are missing tonight, and I'd like to read a few participant comments that were provided on exit surveys. One of our referred youth said, "One thing I really liked about my experience with Peer Court is that people understood me." Another referred youth said, "Thank you for helping me do a lot better in school." An apparent or guardian of a referred youth commented, "Piers do a fantastic job explaining the program, problem-solving, and following up." Salt Lake Peer Court is important to this community, and I hope you consider fully funding our grant request for the 2016-2017 year. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. Kaylee Bonner, followed by Louise Lopez, and Ms. Bonner is going to speak about CDBG, page eight, number 17.
So hello, my name is Kaylee Bonner. I'm the high school volunteer other Kaylee was talking about. I'm a junior at 9th and West High School. I have been a volunteer with Peer Court since September of last year. Peer Court is important to the community because it gives troubled youth a second chance, and the volunteers have an opportunity to be a mentor to the referred youth. Another important aspect of Peer Court is the disposition options that are given to the referred youth. In order for a youth to graduate from Peer Court, they must have disposition options that meet the three pillars of restorative justice, which are accountability, skill development, and community connection. So restorative justice is what makes Peer Court such a significant part of the community, because unlike the punitive approach, it allows youth to develop skills that the youth may need to develop a positive interest in school, give the youth ways to connect in a positive way with their community, and help the youth understand the impact of their behaviors on others. behaviors on others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bonner. Louise Lopez, followed by Stuart Ralphs, and Mr. Lopez is going to speak about CDBG, page eight, number seventeen.
Hi, I'm Louise Lopez. I'm one of the volunteers at Peer Court. I technically count as an adult volunteer because I'm eighteen, but like, anyway. I want to talk to you today about some of the fundamentals of like, Salt Lake Peer Court that I think should be stressed, and I think there are three sort of fundamental attributes to Salt Lake Peer Court that I think you should consider when making your decisions, right? So one, the first is youth empowerment, right? Like, that concept sounds so amazing, and it is, because we have youth that are taking a problem that is directly affecting them in their own hands. I don't think there's any other form of justice more beautiful than that. Secondly, restorative justice, before I came to Peer Court, I was like, restorative justice? What? I didn't know what that was, right? And a lot of high schoolers and adult volunteers that come over don't know either. But then, we go through the year, and we're enacting restorative justice at a level I think only graduate students get to experience. So I think it's so powerful to have youth be empowered by like, scholarly work that not everyone has access to. And it's our most susceptible youth in the systems that are getting this. We have youth of color, queer, LGBT youth, low-income youth, that are receiving this education that is so empowering, so empowering. And I think the third thing would be that, that these marginalized students are being served, right? That these students, it's not just students with good grades and students with money and finances, right? It's students of color, it's students who lie on the queer LGBT spectrum, it's students that are low-income, that are taking charge of a problem directly affecting them. And I think that when you're considering funding us or investing in us, that you consider that you're empowering us. I think that's great, that you are investing, funding, empowering students of color, LGBT youth, and low-income students.
Time.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Stuart Ralphs, followed by Carrie Muller. Mr. Ralphs will be speaking about CDBG, page eight, number eighteen.
Thank you. Hard act to follow. Legally, the Society of Salt Lake has been operating in Salt Lake City for ninety-four years, providing family law representation. Our domestic violence program that we're asking funding for provides start-to-finish representation, which is the only organization in Utah that does so, for victims of domestic violence to get protective orders and civil stalking injunctions. I want to address some questions whether or not these TV services fit within the Salt Lake City's five-year plan. In the plan, the objectives are listed as expand housing options for extremely low-income individuals and other vulnerable populations, increase access to emergency shelter, healthcare, and other supportive services for persons experiencing homelessness, and then your target populations are homeless, victims of domestic violence, and abused and neglected children. These protective orders almost always award possession of the residents to a victim of domestic violence, which ensures that they have shelter for themselves and their minor children. In essence, protective orders prevent homelessness. Studies, both local and national, have shown that half of domestic violence women and children are fleeing domestic violence. Let me repeat that. One-half of the women and children that are fleeing domestic violence are homeless. Fully thirty-eight percent of all victims of domestic violence are homeless at one point in their life or not. Clearly, council members, protective order services do fit within Salt Lake City's five-year plan for community development block grant funding. This is only the second year that Salt Lake City has not been funded through CDPG funding, and we appreciate your support in following the recommendation of the Citizen Review Committee. They're the independent experts that have reviewed these grants, and they feel that this is within the funding prerogatives of the council, and would ask you to support their recommendation, wasn't what we asked for, but their recommendation of eleven thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ralphs.
And Carl is with my office and will wait since I was able to finish in time.
So Carrie Muller, is she, oh, no, that's a no. Okay, Jan, thank you. Jan Carter, followed by Pamela Okamura. Ms. Carter is going to speak on CDBG, page eight, number twenty, and page nine, number twenty-one.
That was a tall person. Hi, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm Jan Carter, the Development Coordinator at Odyssey House of Utah. We did submit two requests. Our Healthy Food Access for Recovery Project would provide fresh produce and other healthy foods for over six hundred clients in residence with us on a daily basis. We have adults, adolescents, and parents with young children. We can, we do have access to less healthy food through food banks and the Bishop Storehouse. It is much more difficult to get the healthy food that we are eagerly trying to provide them with, and healthy food is key to recovery. Our vocational training program is our second year of requesting funding, and we do appreciate the recommendation for funding there. The vocational training program is a vital component of our adult program, and we help over four hundred adults every year with that program. It's so key that, that our adult clients have a job when they leave treatment for addiction, and without a job, they're so much more likely to return to what they were doing before they came in for treatment. It's a very powerful part of what we offer. The clients start with just some basic skills, learning how to cook and clean. A lot of them don't even know how to make a bed. And then they move into our upholstery shop. We work with a lot of local businesses. They then work on our construction crew, and as they show responsibility, they have an opportunity to work in our pivot program. We partner with local businesses, and they actually go to a job site, and they are paid. And that has been a wonderful community partnership. Last year, we had thirty-six of our clients who worked for pivot partners while they were in treatment, who were hired for those partners after they graduated. So it's turning out to be just a really beneficial thing.
Time.
Thank you for your opportunity, giving me an opportunity, and for your recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Pamela Okamura, followed by Mara Haight, and Ms. Okamura is going to speak about CDBG, page nine, number twenty-two. Is Ms. Okamura here? Okay, Mara Haight, followed by Matt Minkovich, and Mara Haight will speak about CDBG, page nine, number twenty-three.
Hi, I'm Mara Haight, the Executive Director of the Rape Recovery Center. And first, I just want to thank both the mayor and the council for being so friendly to women, for enacting the CDA, and just for your support of the Rape Recovery Center over the years. The council last year was very supportive of survivors in making sure that rape kits are being tested in our city, and because of that, the Rape Recovery Center has seen a huge increase in demand for our services. The more rape kits that are tested, the more advocacy needs there are for survivors of sexual violence. And the Rape Recovery Center is the only provider of its kind in Utah. We provide advocacy and crisis intervention and therapy services for sexual assault survivors, and we really are the only agency of our kind that specializes in services for sexual assault survivors. We have seen a forty percent increase in our services over the last two years, specifically in our advocacy and crisis intervention services. And we really appreciate the recommendations of both the mayor and the Citizens Advisory Council to fund the Rape Recovery Center. However, we're deeply concerned at the reduction in funding from previous years. So we're just urging the council to consider increasing that funding so we can meet the previous year's funding level of thirty-five thousand dollars, and make sure that we can continue providing the services that need to be provided to survivors of sexual violence in our community. So.
Thank you, Ms. Haight. Matt Minkovich, followed by Jennifer Godfrey. Mr. Minkovich will speak about CDBG, page nine, number twenty-four. Home, page one, number five, and ESG, page one, number two, and Page Two, number two.
Good evening. I want to thank the members of the council. I want to thank Mayor Biskupski. I want to thank the citizens who provided their recommendations as well. I, Matt Minkovich, and I represent my beloved team at the Road Home, and we exist to help people to overcome homelessness. We are honored to be a part of the camaraderie, the network of providers who are before you tonight, under your consideration for funding, and we are grateful to be a part of that group. I just want to tell you a quick story, keep this thing within two minutes. Right before coming over here, beautiful little seven-month-old baby in a stroller. Hard to call him a baby, he's so big. His big, tall dad told me, "Ten pounds, four ounces at birth." I looked up at him, said, "The fruit doesn't fall far from the tree, does it?" And I thought to myself, "Why in the world do you need to be here in shelter tonight?" I didn't say that, I just felt to. And I thought, "I thank all the forces of good and kindness that you are, as opposed to where you could be out on the streets." And I look at that little kid, and he's looking right back at me, his little determined eyes, chewing on his little mitten, he had a little mouse mitten, he's just chewing away on it, looking right at me with full determination. I look at them with hope, because I know they're moving out. They're going to move into housing. That's how it works. You know, the odds are in their favor that they won't come back, and I'm proud of that. This world's upside down. And I have two hundred kids in shelters tonight, just here and in Midvale. We can fix that, though. Together, we can fix that. And every recommendation you have before you for the Road Home is a part of that solution. You're helping that family off the street tonight. You're helping with rental assistance and case management that will help that family move out, stabilize in housing, move on, and odds are, will never come back into shelter.
Time.
Thank you, Mr. Minkovich. Jennifer Godfrey, followed by Laura Sacks, and Ms. Godfrey is going to speak about CDBG, page ten, numbers twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. Hopwa, page one, number three. ESG, page two, number one, and Home, page one, number one.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Godfrey, the Chief Operations Officer of Social Services for Salt Lake Community Action Program. I would like to extend Aaron's apologies for being unable to attend this evening. She's in DC, meeting with our congressional representatives. And I would like to thank the mayor and the council for allowing me the opportunity to share with you how the awarded funding will impact our clients served within Salt Lake City. The early headstart funding will allow us to reach our most vulnerable population, children birth through three. Our early headstart sites are located within Palmer Court and the Horizonte Teen Mom Program. Children enrolled within this program will receive medical, dental, nutritional, social, emotional, mental health, and educational services. These truly are the most vulnerable children in which we serve. Our Real Food Rising Program is a youth development leadership program, which will allow our youths to build job training and teamwork skills, public speaking and communication skills. This program provides fresh food and vegetables that are distributed throughout our community, through farm stands, our food pantries, through our central kitchen, and through various community partners. The housing programs that we were funded through, being Hopwa, Homeless Prevention, and Home Funding, will allow our families living below the poverty level, who face high-cost rents expending up to forty-five percent of their monthly income, some much-needed support. This funding will allow us to provide rental and deposit assistance for stable, safe, and affordable housing as a means to end homelessness. Hopwa funding will allow our clients to gain access to needed resources through short-term rental and deposit assistance, and relocation stabilization services as needed. As an agency, we strive to expand housing options for extremely low-income individuals and special-needs populations by providing comprehensive case management services and housing assistance bundled with many of the other services that we offer through Salt Lake Community Action Program.
Time.
As an agency, we would like to extend our deepest gratitude to the council for supporting our vision to continue the support, to continue to support the needs of our Salt Lake City residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Godfrey. Laura Sacks, followed by Jeanette Bott. Ms. Sacks will speak about CDBG, page ten, number twenty-nine.
My name is Laura Sacks, and I am the Program Manager at Salt Lake Donated Dental Services. I have worked in a successful dental practice for over two decades. Two years ago, I decided that I wanted my time spent at work to have more meaning, and with little convincing, I joined the Donated Dental Team. Twenty-six years ago, Dr. Ralph Montgomery started Salt Lake Donated Dental Services to offer quality, comprehensive dental care for those in Salt Lake City without any access to dental care. Last year, our volunteer dentist provided over one million dollars in free dental services for the indigent, and ironically, our discounted program donated more services than the program received in fees for the treatment and provided by one hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. I have been impressed with the level of care that Donated Dental provides its patients. There is truly no difference in the quality of materials that are used than the ones used in high-end offices that I once worked in. Donated Dental is only able to do this because of the tremendous commitment of our community. At Donated Dental, I'm the one responsible for coordinating dental care and scheduling appointments for the patients. It is relentless and rewarding work. I have great satisfaction in working with our patients and helping them achieve their goals. It is also heart-wrenching to watch when patients stumble and have to start over. Donated Dental is requesting thirty thousand dollars from CDBG to enable our dentists to continue providing preventive, restorative, and emergency dental care for Salt Lake City's most vulnerable. We are a unique project from other dental clinics serving low-income populations because we do emphasize preventive and restorative dental care instead of simply emergency services. Donated Dental believes offering a comprehensive approach allows patients to receive the highest level of service and provides the best investment for our donors.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sacks. Jeanette Bott, followed by Heidi Justice, and Ms. Bott will speak about CDBG, page ten, number thirty-one.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Jeanette Bott. I'm the Chief Development Officer for the Utah Food Bank. Those of you who know us understand that we're an emergency food assistance program dedicated to serving the four hundred and twenty-three thousand people in the state of Utah who are challenged with food insecurity. Of that, number one in five are children. So this evening, I'm here to report to you about a new program that we had started this year called the Mobile School Pantry Program. We have reached out to corporate sponsors and municipalities, and we've been able this year to go to thirty-three elementary and junior high schools with a mobile pantry. We pull onto the playground on a set day once a month, and we're serving families and children of that school from this vehicle. We are able to get the program to the school, to the administration, to the parents, and then to those students. Students who are in school that are hungry and are not eating or not learning, they're not developing, they're not growing. If folks are using grocery money to pay rent, do they eat, or are they homeless? This program is allowing us to help, to help those families. Eighty-seven percent of the population we're serving live below the, one hundred and eighty-five percent below the federal poverty level, meaning a family of four lives on about twenty-three thousand dollars. The mobile pantry has been devised so that we can take nourished, nutritional, healthy items. It's a client choice. The family chooses from the product on the truck. If they use it and they need it, great. If they don't want it, they don't have to take it. A child can attend, a parent doesn't have to be there. The four schools in the Salt Lake District, the funding we're asking for through this grant, have been helped so far this year. From September through the end of February, we've served fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven folks. Of that, seven thousand eight hundred and eight are children under eighteen. We are making a difference in that one-to-five ratio. We ask again for funding from you for four schools in the Salt Lake District. We understand the need for these children. We understand the urgency of their health. We thank you in advance for helping us. We thank you in advance for joining us in the fight against hunger, and we ask you to give thought to that future generation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bott. Heidi Justice, followed by Kathy Bray. Ms. Justice will speak about CDBG, page eleven, number thirty-two.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Heidi Justice, and I'm the Executive Director for Utah Health and Human Rights. We are one of thirty-four federally recognized torture treatment programs in the United States. In 2015, we served three hundred and fifty-four refugees, asylum seekers, and asylees who've experienced torture and severe war trauma. We serve men, women, and children. Our youngest client is eight, and our oldest client is eighty-two. Last year alone, we served forty-two children, about half of those who are unaccompanied re... Last year alone, we served 42 children, about half of those who are unaccompanied refugee minors, living with foster parents in the United States until they age out at the age of 21, and who are also at a high risk of homelessness because of their unaccompanied status. Our holistic services include individual, family, and group psychotherapy, case management, psychiatric, and pharmacological care, medical advocacy, and complementary massage therapy provided by volunteers. Our grant request is focused on increasing access to healthcare for our clients who are either homeless or at risk of homelessness, as well as increasing the capacity of our organization through volunteers. One of the main barriers to integration and successful mental health treatment for our clients is transportation. Because of their past trauma history, many of our clients become extremely isolated very easily, and often even have a difficult time coming to their appointments at our agency, which does not help them heal if they can't get therapy. So learning how to use public transportation is one of their first steps towards greater improvement in mental health and self-sufficiency, and volunteer mentors will help them learn how to use the public transportation system. So I would respectfully request the council support the recommendations of the Advisory Committee and the mayor, and consider funding us at the full request level of $20,000. Thank you for your time, and I'd also invite any of you to come tour our facilities at any time we'd love to have you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Kathy Bray, followed by Stacy Stevens. And Ms. Bray is going to speak about CDBG, page 11, number 34, and ESG, page 1, number 3.
Thank you very much. I'm Kathy Bray, I'm the President and CEO for Volunteers of America, Utah. And thank you, Mayor Biskupski, it's good to be with you tonight, and the city council members as well. In the CDBG request, we are, as many of you know, expanding our homeless youth services, and the request there is related to increasing staff for our new facility that we're going to open in May for homeless youth that'll have the overnight emergency shelter and other services, education and employment. We appreciate the consideration of this request, and the Citizen Advisory Board recommended some funding, and I know not all recommendations will be equal in that you have tough decisions to make, and appreciate that. We know that you support the homeless youth services that we're providing, and we're very grateful for that. Whatever you can do to assist us, we appreciate. The ESG proposal was for more facility operations, utilities, insurance, and so forth, and we greatly appreciate the recommendations of the Citizen Advisory Board, as well as the mayor, for increased funding for that. The reality is that we have a lot of homeless youth in our community who need our support. We are really at a time where there's increased support, public and private, we're making a big difference in their lives when we open the new facility. We'll see about 800 youth this coming year, and we're going to help them with emergency shelter, employment, housing, and education. And we appreciate whatever you can do to help us in our major expansion of services, and we'll make sure to invite you to the ribbon cutting in the end of May. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bray. Stacy Stevens, followed by Pam Bodie, yes, Pam Bodie. Ms. Stevens is going to speak about CDBG, page 11, number 35, and ESG, page 1, number 4.
Good evening, my name is Stacy Stevens, I'm here representing Wasat Childless Healthcare, but I'm known as 4th Street Clinic. We are requesting money from CDBG and ESG for our medical outreach team, and this money will help pay for a portion of the salary and benefits of a provider. The goal of 4th Street Clinic is to increase access to primary healthcare for homeless individuals. In 2015, 4th Street Clinic served a little over 4,800 individuals. About 80% of those individuals did not have health insurance. The MOST team targets those individuals who are service-resistant, who aren't coming into our clinic, and most of them are medically fragile. In the past six months, we have served 414 unduplicated individuals through medical outreach. Individuals who are homeless are three to six more times likely to become ill than someone who is housed, and the life expectancy decreases. They often die prematurely due to preventable, treatable diseases and infections. Wound care is the number-one treatment that is provided through medical outreach. The MOST team is a clinic on wheels. The providers go along with medical assistance, an individual from VOA, and they do on-the-spot medical treatment wherever they are. And the other part of that medical treatment is they want to build rapport with these individuals to help to connect them to mainstream services and housing. The MOST team receives referrals from homeless service providers, law enforcement, emergency responders, and anyone else who sees a need on the street. Medical outreach is a cost-efficient approach to providing medical treatment to those who often do not seek medical services until symptoms are exasperated and treatment is sought through expensive emergency care. On behalf of 4th Street Clinic and those we serve, we'd like to extend our appreciation to the mayor and to the council for the recommendation of funding and the continued support for 4th Street Clinic. We hope to continue our partnership, and we're passionate about serving those that are most vulnerable in our society. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Pam Bodie, followed by Jared Haven. Ms. Bodie is going to speak about CDBG, page 11, number 37, and ESG, page 1, number 5.
Hi, my name's Pam Bodie, I'm from the YWCA, Utah. The YWCA has sheltered and supported domestic violence survivors for 40 years. Domestic violence is a persistent and destructive problem that undermines families and communities. Its victims are the individuals who are abused and the children who are traumatized by the violence in their homes. But more broadly, the entire community bears the costs of homelessness, poverty, immediate and chronic injury, and many other consequences of abuse. With your help, last year, our shelter served 728 women and children, 309 were from Salt Lake City. However, the overall number we served fell by 148 over the previous year because the average length of stay increased from 41 to 54 days. Women are coming to us with more problems and barriers than ever before. Increasingly, their ability to heal from abuse and move forward is complicated by chronic physical and mental health problems related to the abuse, with difficulty finding jobs to provide a living wage, and with the lack of affordable housing in our community. Their best chance for successful outcomes depends on the safe refuge and trauma-informed case management and advocacy provided by the YWCA. We're grateful to have been recommended for CDBG funding for the YWCA's Women in Jeopardy Program. However, the recommendations fall short, about 30% short of last year's award. In the light of the critical need for our services, we hope you will consider restoring the amount of our award to the level of last year's grant. We're also applying for ESG funding for our residential self-sufficiency program, which is transitional housing for domestic violence survivors.
Time.
Thank you for the mayor's recommendation, which will help us continue to provide those services and help residents re-enter the community with self-reliance, confidence, and skills to build brighter futures. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bodie. Jared Haven, followed by Zach Bale. And Zach Bale is the last card that I have for this public hearing, so if anyone else has an interest in speaking to any of these federal grants, please fill a white card out and hand it to staff. Jared Haven is going to now speak about HOPWA, page 1, number 4.
Thank you, and good evening, council members and Mayor Biskupski. And thank you for the opportunity for me to address you this evening. My name is Jared Haven, I'm a case manager at Utah AIDS Foundation. The Utah AIDS Foundation truly appreciates Salt Lake City's past support. Housing remains the most vital tool to have, we have to ensure people living with HIV remain stable in their medical care and adherent to their medications. The Utah AIDS Foundation appreciates your consideration for continued partnership. I thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Haven. And Zach Bale. Mr. Bale's going to speak about HOPWA, page 1, number 1 and number 2.
Great, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council, and thanks to the advisory committee. Wanted to speak to our two requests. It's funding for individuals who are living with HIV and AIDS, and just share a little bit of the support of what these funds provide. These are 33 households across our two funding sources of individuals that really often come to make a very hard decision if not for this funding, either to follow the decisions that they have in their medical world, to be healthy, or often to pay rent. And these funds go a long way to support them in making both of those decisions. About 70% are extremely low-income, so often that decision can be very real. About 50% have income, and about the other half are on fixed income, either receiving social security or other support. About a third are families, and so that further exacerbates some of this for many. So thank you very much for the recommendation for funding. It goes a long way to support the housing authority's mission to provide quality and affordable housing, and promoting self-sufficiency and supporting them in their path. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bale. Having no further cards, I will entertain a motion regarding item C4.
Mr. Chairman, that we close this public hearing?
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Kitchen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and the public hearing is closed. We're now moving on to our comments and questions to the mayor from the city council. So as council members, do any of you have questions for Mayor Biskupski? Seeing none, we will move to the comments to the city council. This is the portion that many of you are here for tonight. Again, I will just quickly go over the rules of decorum. We ask that there be no cheering, clapping, jeering, booing, any sort of public response regarding any of the comments that are made at the podium. We also ask that if you are going to speak, that you leave your placards at your seat, you don't bring them up to the podium. We can read, and we can see them well, so thank you for that. So please, if you're going to speak, leave your placards at your seat or with somebody else in the audience. I would like, the first card that I have, oh, and if you have not filled a card out but you are interested in speaking, please fill out a yellow card and hand it to one of our staff members on either side of the room. Since Mr. Al Khalife, since I had him, he was signed up before, I'm going to have, we'll go to him first, followed by Merle French. Mr. Khalife.
Many city council, I commend the name of peace, the name of God. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to give input to all the agenda items, and there are many, so I'll go as fast as I can. I commend the mayor for your future vision for the city and being accessible, which is our community values. Excuse me. We hope that you continue to attend these city council meetings. I understand that your predecessor didn't always come to these. Change is great. It would be equally great if the council reverses your earlier votes from the working session in favor of the outside counsel regarding Amendment Number 3, I believe it was, for the civilian review board having outside counsel. This would be a big mistake, I'll tell you why. It should be, first of all, dismantled. The reason it should be dismantled is, in its current state, it's in disrepair as an elitist organization that is self-serving to those of our city's most valued demographic, white, Christian, elderly, and making over 45,000 per year. Mr. Rasmussen's passionate plea earlier today proves he's a representative consistent with this unlikely, well, he's inconsistent, he's a representative, most likely not to face the barrel of a gunshot four times for holding one-half of a broomstick. Go ahead and keep him as your Band-Aid so that all of you can sleep well knowing that one of your own supports you in the status quo, but it's the desire of many of our community represented by those in the back. And please consider my decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khalife. Merle French, followed by George Chapman.
Hi, I'm Merle. I would like to thank the council for their persistent efforts on finding solutions to the often emotionally charged issues between our police and the community, and for our new mayor and police chief for jumping on board. I would like to give credit where credit is due. The measure to support an outside legal counsel for the civilian board is well-taken, and well worth a tax dollar is needed to support it, but I hope that that legal advice will come from a neutral source. I urge the council also to examine the underlying causes of the issues in our community, these being drug peddling, the use and availability, and gang activity that hold our city hostage. Drug addiction, which is a disease locked in super-denial, has devastating and long-lasting consequences for the individuals and communities alike. Anyone that doubts that, I urge you to spend a little time in an emergency room, or an intensive care unit, or go for a ride with a car. Dealing with a drug-addicted and associated crimes is not as simple as a rehab program. It takes an involved community aimed at education and prevention. The addicted are often in a no-win situation as are the society that has to deal with them. For any of you who have ever faced a drug-crazed, unpredictable individual determined to do bodily harm, believe me, body weight and body size mean nothing. Cops do not have the luxury of subduing drugs as we do in hospitals. Add unadulterated anger to the mix, and you literally have a human lethal weapon that puts both the community and the cops at risk. Our most vulnerable are the socially marginalized, as in our homeless population, unintegrated refugee population, our minorities, but most notably, the youngsters from all walks of life. We will get nowhere as a community until we understand that all lives matter at all times, and that each of us has a responsibility to eradicate crime. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. French. George Chapman, followed by Douglas Kotan.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'd like to ask you to please support mass transit, and if you're going to have late-night meetings, you're actually discouraging people from using mass transit, because the buses stop in your RE830. In most other areas, maybe one or two might run past 10, but there was a planning commission meeting that lasted until 10:40 this last week. How do you encourage mass transit use with that kind of meeting? I mean, please, support mass transit. You have $5.6 million sequestered for a tracks train extension that'll never happen, use it for extending the hours of buses. We need more neighborhood bus service. And on the Bodai Apartments, please don't do anything until you have a good public outreach. You're right, we need better public outreach. I found out from the newspaper, Representative Hollings didn't even know about it. This is ridiculous. It has a lot of good facets, but it isn't really what we wanted, I thought, your goal in mixed income, housing is not mostly low-income. That doesn't help our society. We're trying to get a good solution here, and that doesn't appear to be a good solution, because it's a block away from the second-biggest drug market in Salt Lake City. Please don't go any further until there's a good public outreach on this. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Douglas Kotan, followed by Jason Brenner.
First of all, I would like to thank the city council for being patient with me two weeks ago when I talked about Mary. I'll just say that I was in the same room with the Catholic priest when he gave her the last rites of the church, and also, we held her weight on her 58th birthday, and now I'm going to turn over to a different subject. That subject is, people continue to ask me for money on a train. It happened last night when I was riding up to the university. On the way back, a guy sat in front of me and said, "Excuse me, but do you have spare change?" I said, "No." And I was asked again this morning in Saigon, the Gomme, a lady asked me, "Do you have..." A lady asked me, "Do you have $11 so I can go to the auction?" I said, "No, I don't have cash on me." She says, "Oh, that's all right." So, I would suggest that the Utah Transit Authority, as far as soliciting on the train, Utah Transit Authority has done nothing about it. I've complained about it, even to the governor, and Utah Transit Authority tells me, Will, we have not put police on all the buses and all the trains. I think that is stupid, absolutely stupid. Utah Transit Authority can do a better job at seeing to it that I am not solicited and I like to ride the trains and the buses.
Time.
And I don't like to be bothered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kotan. Jason Brentner, followed by Oscar Ross Jr.
Counsel, Madam Mayor, my name is Utah Brentner, named after the late Utah Phillips, not the state, but I still love my state and I love my city even more. I was born and raised here, and as you're going to hear tonight from many of these people in the back here, we are asking for a community police review board. It is necessary in all communities, and more so in my community where I come from, and I live in the homeless community. I currently live at the Road Home, and I've seen things on Rio Grande, you know, drug dealing, drug-using, prostitution, violence, I've seen it all, and these are things people shouldn't have to see, and it saddens me, but I'm more angry at the abuse that we take every day from the Salt Lake City Police Department. I see things like the morning shakedowns to the people sleeping on the sidewalk. I see intimidation tactics to force us into submission, into a panic mode where they usually end up with an arrest and/or illegal search and seizure. And, you know, is it right that five police officers, does it take five police officers and five squad cars to arrest one black man who is not resisting? That's a little too much. I was arrested on the night that Abdi Mohammed was shot. I was out there speaking my mind, exercising my First Amendment right, and I was arrested for it because he didn't want to hear it. I broke no laws. I was assaulted without ever being told I was under arrest. I was threatened with jail time if I didn't waive my right to remain silent, so I spent the night in jail. What I'm asking for today is mandatory crisis intervention training, foot patrols, so they can come out, get to know us, we can get to know them. They're no longer viewed as police officers but human beings, and same with us. You know, we're human beings too.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brentner. Oscar Ross Jr., followed by Dustin Trent.
Here I am here again, huh? No, good morning, good evening, okay. I don't think that we're being very transparent. We live in a racist city. That's testimony to what happened on the 27th. We, Utah Against Police Brutality, was out that evening at 5:00, and we were addressing issues. And like about 8:00 that evening, Abdi got shot. But you need to understand that we are a racist city. We're no better than Baltimore, Ferguson, or whatever, okay? The rogue force that has now been depleted, with six officers being released from the Los, I mean, Salt Lake City Police Department in the last four or five years, I guess, six, including the chief Burbank. Okay, we have a crypto-corruption cover-up problem also. This is not something out of my mind. This is what we're dealing with in this city. Okay, we need accountability, responsibility, and we need to be compensated for those in affections that have been afflicting on us in this community. The present system is inconsiderate, indifferent, and inhuman to the community. Change is in order of the day. We ask you to do diligence, to do due diligence to move on this matter immediately. Our patient has been tested through missteps and biases. We ask that you exert your energy and effort to make our system more adequate to serve community members. We ask for change, and us ask you to give us the community control board that we want. And I just was going to ask you, Aaron, that little beautiful baby of yours, is he for sale or she for sale? I'm just jiving, okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Am I two minutes out?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, you guys have a good evening, and I didn't mean to interrupt your parade. Thanks.
Dustin Trent, followed by Jason Cronin.
Good evening, and thank you for the chance to speak. I believe as a resident of Salt Lake City and as of the United States, that it has become patently obvious that we have a need for an independent, democratically-elected, community-controlled police review board. Too many instances in this country, especially the disproportionate use of force towards people of color, has become an endemic in our society, and it is no longer something that we should tolerate. It is something that has become incredibly important to more and more Americans as days go by, for the people that they know being either victimized or shot by the police who are charged to serve and protect us. So, I would charge all of you to seriously consider how you would feel if you or your children were being victimized and/or killed by the police and there was no democratically-elected organization to hold them accountable. We should also find that the body camera footage should be publicly available. We paid for the body cameras. It is our tax money, and it is something that should be able to be viewed online 24/7. If we have the cops that are protecting us, there is no need to have fear of this motion. It should be something that seems obvious, but now, it all seems a little bit crazy. We need a little justice for Abdi. No one, holding a broomstick regardless of what this instance might be, should be shot down in the street like a dog. It is unacceptable, and it is happening beyond belief towards people who are already so far behind in our society. So, I would ask each of you to search your hearts and make this organization a reality. It is something that is long overdue.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. Again, no comment from the, please. Thank you. Jason Cronin, followed by Dylan Richardson.
One of the greatest leaders of this country once said, "Those who make peaceful revolution impossible make violent revolution inevitable." That great leader was John F. Kennedy. The people of Salt Lake City are furious, undescribably furious. We are furious because the video that belongs to us has not been delivered, and we fear that something is amok, something is going on, and we will not stand for it. We are furious because the citizen review board that supposedly exists has been deliberately made ineffectual and powerless against the forces that be, and those forces that be are a justice system that has repeatedly served to protect itself and protect those within its own organizations. Do not mistake the peaceful nature of our heretofore protests and our demonstrations with weakness or apathy. Do not make that mistake. Do not underestimate the will of the power and the power of the people to do what we must do to see the change that we demand. We demand a citizen review board that has power against, in cases of police brutality, to make the correct recommendations and the corrections that are needed. We also demand, as has been stated previously, that these body cams, the videos, and the footage be made available to the citizens to which these videos belong. This is getting ridiculous. This event occurred February 27th, and today's date is March 15th. I don't know what's happening with those videos, but on behalf of the citizens of Salt Lake City, we demand them.
Time.
Once again, those who make peaceful revolution impossible make violent revolution inevitable. It is up to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Dylan Richardson, followed by Amy Jones.
Mayor Biskowski, members of the council. My name is Dylan Richardson. I am a graduate student at the University of Utah, and I am here to speak on the issue of the community police review board. On February 27th, I was very angry, as many people here were, to watch as my community and the people who are charged with the duty to protect us and the people who live here were acting in the same shameful ways that we have seen in Ferguson, Missouri, Baltimore, in Texas, in New York, across this country, and I am fed up, as is everyone here. I was afraid of how this whole thing would play out. As we have seen in those other instances, it has not necessarily been peaceful and respectful towards the communities who are involved. However, when I attended the march and the rally two days after Abdi was shot, I was very impressed by the response of the police department and how respectful they were towards the protesters, and I think that Salt Lake City has the opportunity to be a national leader in these discussions and can provide a model that can be used throughout the country. There is no reason that someone wielding a broomstick should be shot by police. It is clear what people want. We want control. We want to have oversight. There needs to be someone and people who can ensure that the people who are charged to protect us are obeying the law and they are not outside of the law. Black Lives Matter, justice for Abdi, community control now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Amy Jones, followed by Gregory Lucero.
Hey, everybody. I'm Amy. Hi, hi, Mayor. So, what happened was terrible, and that really sucks that it happened, and it should never happen again, and I don't want it to happen again, so like, when there's no justice, I'm sorry, there will be no justice or no peace if the police act militant, so it's not acceptable, and there should be a citizen review board, and I don't know, it just really sucks, and I don't want that to just continue. So, like, release the footage that we are asking for, please, and like, oh, God, please, please just, I don't know, don't kill people, like, that, like, but, I don't know, just, please, I don't know, I don't know, people, ugh, ugh. But yeah, my name's Amy, and I just, I just don't like what happened, and I don't want it to happen again, and you guys have so much power, like, I'm sitting here, it's my first time here, and I'm like, you guys have a lot of power, so you guys, like, do it for the greater good. I mean, why not? Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Jones. Gregory Lucero, followed by Bernard Hart.
Hi, I'm Gregory Lucero. I'm a member of the Freedom Road Socialist Organization and one of the founding members of Utah Against Police Brutality, and of course, I'm so glad to see a new mayor, certainly not the old mayor, and I'm certainly glad to welcome the new council members. Let's be clear, the reason why you're here is because you are given a clear mandate to lead. You are given a clear mandate to change policy, to improve Salt Lake City from the previous do-nothing mayor, and that's your power to move forward. So, I've actually been in contact with Abdi's family, and while I certainly understand we all want to see the footage, at bare minimum, it should be released to the family, or at least they should know what happened that fateful night, and I think that's well within your purview. In addition, the police, Salt Lake City is known nationally for police brutality. It ends up on CNN, on MSNBC, even on Fox News, that Salt Lake City has a cop problem, and the problem is, we are getting disproportionately killed relative to our population. This is a quiet, mid-sized city. This is not South Central, this is not Compton, and this is not New York, and the fact that we are confronting police brutality so greatly means that something needs to change. What is that change? It is community control of the police. How often, over the last two years, have we seen people murdered in the streets with no justice and no recourse? And let us call this what it is. This was an attempted murder of a child with no effort of de-escalation, no effort of less use of force. This was a brutal attempted murder that happens all too frequently in Salt Lake City. And so, in the era of Black Lives Matter, I would like to call back, if you agree, don't clap, but rather, go back to black power.
Thank you, Mr. Lucero. Bernard Hart, followed by Ian Decker.
Thanks for listening to us. My name is Bernard Hart. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I didn't plan to speak tonight, but just something just popped out at me that I just thought was so obvious, that you sat here in the early part of the meeting, talking to people in a lot of the social services and providing to the community here in Salt Lake, and they all care, they all have an interest in helping people, and they go out of their way, and they're dealing with the same people that the police are dealing with every day of their lives, probably more so than the police, and in greater numbers, and in more diverse situations, but not once did they shoot anybody, and it's the exact same population the police are struggling to learn how to deal with, and they have guns, and they come out as brutes, and I see them in front of the Road Home all the time, I was down there after the Zay Patrick's Day Parade, and they were out in force. And amongst those people on the street were people without guns helping the same population. There's something wrong. If one population can help a population without guns and deal with it to solve the problem, the other population with guns probably doesn't even need the guns if they want to solve a problem, other than to show how powerful they are. So, please, considering your deliberations in your decision-making process, do the police actually need those guns in dealing with the same populations that the social services deal with without guns? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Ian Decker, followed by Colin Williams.
Hi, my name is Ian Decker. I'm with the Freedom Road Socialist Organization. I think that most of what I could say here is either said already or is to be said, but I think that there's something really important, you know, of course, there's the baseline demands here of justice for Abdi, of community control of the police, release the footage. There's numerous victims I could name, but I think there's something really important here, and that's the word "demand." When the council members listen to this, when the mayor listens to this, I think that you need to realize that right now you're at a crossroads, possibly in your career, where you could either be known as the face of the nation, leading the progress in the fight against police brutality, or you could be the shame of Utah. It could be on the news, Derek Kitchen, Jackie Bukowski, leading the way in the fight against police brutality, leading the way in progress, or it could be Jackie Bukowski, Derek Kitchen, Andrew Johnson, whomever, standing and defending police murder, okay? We had 1,200 people march in the streets of Salt Lake City. That's unheard of in this city. This is a real problem that people are hearing and that we're going to keep mobilizing on. So, just to wrap it up, we're going to be out on the streets, we're going to keep making these demands, we're going to keep pushing. It might not always be in here, it might be in the streets, it might be 3,000 people in the streets next time. We're done, we're done asking, we're done begging, we're ready to demand these changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Colin Williams, followed by Nicholas Schiffer.
Point for the rule of decorum, this is a prop integral to the presentation that has been cleared with a security officer.
Okay, well, we're not a court, so would you please put the prop back? We can see it.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, you can have someone hold it for you.
If anyone does feel that their life was eminently threatened by that, please, by all means, speak up to that if it wasn't just a piece of procedure. Silence, of course, because it is a broomstick. I don't think any of us are particularly brave in here. Brave is a word I usually tend to reserve for members of our military or firefighters or that Sarah Bareilles song, so if we can all agree that something like that isn't an immediate threat in my hands as an adult, how is it in the arms of a child? I, I'm not brave, I sometimes scream when I get shot playing a video game, but I'm still not afraid of a broom, and I don't have a Kevlar vest, I don't have pepper spray, I don't have a taser, I don't have nearly as much training as our police officers do. And I want you to... And I want you to know, I use this humor not to dishonor Abdi or anyone that's been shot, but to show that the only way we can consider something like that as a threat is as a joke. And sadly, that is what the officers who shot Abdi have made the police force, a joke. If we are supposed to accept that the Salt Lake City police should reasonably be afraid of brooms for their lives, then clearly we have the weakest and worst-trained police force in the world. If our police are that scared of brooms, I can't even imagine what would happen if a true threat showed up like ISIS with Swiffers.
Okay, order, please. Thank you.
But I don't actually believe that that is the case, obviously. You know, it has to be a joke, because I believe that the Salt Lake City police have some amazing and brave officers.
Time.
So, we need a police force that stands together and says, "I will be more afraid of killing children than a libman."
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Nicholas Schiffer, followed by Carly Haldeman.
My name is Nicholas Schifrar, born, raised, Salt Lake City, Utah, and I'm going to sing something. I suppose we can't all sing along, but we can sing in our hearts. I can hear my neighbor crying, I can't breathe. Now I'm in the struggle and I can't leave. Calling out the violence of the racist police. We ain't gonna stop till people are free. I'm going to tell you, I can't not be here. It would be easy for me to not be here. It would be easy for me to be at home, resting from my workday, thinking about tomorrow, my workday, applying for jobs, preparing for applying for jobs, thinking about graduate school. I can't not be here. In 2014, I flew to New York after Cornel West called for protest. We marched from the Union Square across the Brooklyn Bridge, and there engraved, on the New York Supreme Court Building, are the words, "The firmest pillar of a good government is justice. A just government does not unleash bullets on a citizen to break up a brawl." The demands are clear, the demands are fair. It is your responsibility to follow through with those.
Thank you, Mr. Schifrar. Carly Haldeman, followed by Jacob Jensen.
I'm Carly Haldeman. I am with Utah Against Police Brutality. I've been with them about a year now. On February 27th, we were at your doorsteps, asking for a community control review board. We were on your doorsteps, right out here, right back there, right behind you. This could have been prevented. We're not going to take no for an answer. There's no compromise here. This has to happen. I went there when Abdi was shot, and as I was shouting "Black Lives Matter," the cops were laughing in my face. They were laughing at all of us. This is inappropriate. You're putting bullies in power, you're training them to be monsters, and we are scared of them. They're forgetting that who they serve. They serve me. They serve Abdi. It's not fair. It's not fair. And if we have to keep showing up at your doorstep, shouting "Black Lives Matter" until that hits home, until you believe it, we will keep doing that. I'm sick of seeing the cops bully the homeless community. It's disgusting. The police have shown that they only work for the rich, the white, and the elite, and we're not going to take it anymore. If this community control review board isn't put in place, the next shooting that happens, that's blood on your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haldeman. Jacob Jensen, followed by Theresa Nielsen.
Thank you. I'm Jacob Jensen, and I'm with Utah Against Police Brutality, but I'm not speaking with them in any official capacity today. This city council is not responsible for the installation of the CRB. That happened a while ago. It is, however, the responsibility for you guys to leave things better than the way that it started. The CRB is a failed experiment, and our community deserves better. By mandate, the CRB can only make non-binding recommendations such that, according to your website, it maintains the police chief's complete and final authority over disciplinary actions. This ultimately means one thing, the police policing the police. And if not to add insult to injury, the Attorney's Prosecutions Office doesn't answer to the CRB in any way either. It has no ability to subpoena evidence, like, for instance, body cam footage, which this community is extremely interested in having access to, even if it cannot do so directly. Transparency is a big buzzword right now, but it seems to me that transparency would only reveal that the CRB has its only power to comfort and pacify disenfranchised communities. We need something new. We need a democratically-elected, community-controlled, police review board. It needs the power to subpoena evidence, the ability to change police policy, whose extralegal powers reside mostly with the police, the ability to compel legal charges. And lastly, we need the legal and professional staff to investigate and deliberate responsibly, which I've seen some little efforts towards, and I would encourage that towards this institution. But mostly, what we need now is the support of the council to take the first steps in supporting community control now. I would like to know what each council member stands on it, and I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Theresa Nielsen, followed by Jacob Scott.
I'm going to keep this pretty brief. My name is Theresa. I'm the president of Students for Democratic Society at the University of Utah. For the past year, my friends at Utah Against Police Brutality have been struggling for a community-controlled police review board because of the current trend of police brutality across the country, and the need for one became very apparent when Abdi Mohammed was shot. When I heard about the shooting of Abdi Mohammed by the SLCPD, I was appalled, upset, and sadly unsurprised. Yet another black boy was shot. My lack of surprise is very telling as to why we need this review board. We can no longer sit idly while police continue to attempt a murder. I demand a community-controlled police review board. I demand the release of the body cam footage, and I demand justice for Abdi Mohammed.
Thank you, Ms. Nielsen. Jacob Scott, followed by Nick Godfrey.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not here with a group. I'm here to represent the founding principles of this country, which are liberty and justice. And right now, we have a big justice problem. There is no reason to withhold body cam footage, other than damage control, to try to spin the legalese, to try to spin justifications and definitions to make this justified. That's the only reason. And even if it were to come out, even if, which would take a lot of evidence, because that's all, I mean, it never happens without it, even if charges were pressed, an analysis of the data from the U.S. Department of Justice shows that the percentage of people acquitted that are police versus non-police is 97, or, sorry, 96% to 7%. I'm going to say that again to let it sink in. 96% of the time that a police officer is charged with a crime, charges are dropped or they're acquitted. 7% of, I guess you could call them peasants, 7% of non-police officers have the same treatment. Without transparency, there can be no accountability. And when we live in a country where public officials aren't held to the same laws that their constituents are, it is the very definition of corruption. So, tonight, everybody has a choice, you know? You can, it's accountability, you know? Clear the way for accountability, transparency, or you can block that and be a part of that machine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Nick Godfrey, followed by Alyssa Ferris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for hearing us tonight. I didn't prepare anything, so ask for your patience. On the night of the shooting, I was on my way home, on foot. I live at the art space building, it's directly across from the road home. And as I cut through the gateway and I turned the corner to go home, I found myself in the middle of a crowd of terrified people, running for their lives from a line of police officers holding shields and clubs. I heard people shouting and screaming. I heard, my cousin was shot, they shot my baby cousin. I immediately contacted organizers with Utah Against Police Brutality, who organized a response and came to the scene. We interviewed as many people as we can who witnessed the incident. Those interviews were all consistent, and they were all unfriendly to the police narrative. Despite that being weeks later, we still have not seen the body cam footage. This is in contrast to other shootings, such as the James Dudley Barker shooting, when the footage was released the day after his killing. That's because the footage cut out when he was swinging a shovel. More than a year later, we get cellphone footage that shows him being shot while face-down on the ground with his hands behind his back. This is why we need community control, because when the police are in charge of their own investigation, in charge of what they will release, when they will release it, they will do whatever is convenient for them, whatever serves themselves.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Godfrey. Alyssa Ferris, followed by Janice Kimball. Is Alyssa Ferris here? All right, I do not see Alyssa. Janice Kimball, followed by Dalak Patorius.
I might be at the wrong point in the agenda. I wanted to speak about E2.
About what?
E2, the Bodai Apartments. Is this?
Uh, go ahead, yeah. I mean, this is an open public comment, so you're free to speak.
Okay. I guess I was outnumbered. I wanted to thank the mayor and the city council. My name's Janice Kimball. I'm the director of the Housing Authority of the County of Salt Lake. Our mission is to provide affordable housing to low-income individuals and families, and while promoting self-sufficiency and economic, or neighborhood revitalization. Last month, we were able to provide housing assistance to 3,950 families. We do that through a variety of housing programs, but we know that that doesn't come close to meeting the need in our community. We have a waiting list of 8,100 households, individuals and families. Some have been on the waiting list for at least six years. There's also a study by Jim Woods that indicates there's a huge discrepancy between the numbers of low-income households and the number of affordable units available. The gap that he identified was 43,000 in Salt Lake County. I'm here tonight to speak about the Bodai Apartments. This is a joint project between the Housing Authority of the County of Salt Lake and the Vecino Group. It's 80 units, 60 of which are affordable, so that will be a small dent towards that unmet need. Within that group, there'll be five units for people who are homeless and nine units for people who have mental disability. We will have supportive services on site. The reason why we're here is we're asking for permission, because the city has a housing authority of its own in its jurisdiction. We need permission to be able to develop in the city. So, we're asking for that. It's a good project, and I hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Time.
Thank you, Ms. Kimball. Dalak Patorius, followed by Preston Perez Erickson.
Hello, my name is Dalak Patorius. So, I was a neighborhood kid back in the day. I knew Dylan Taylor. He was a neighborhood kid. You know, he'd walk around the place, go to Dairy Queen, walk down to 7-Eleven like they did, like he did the day he was shot, with his headphones in his ears. That was the day it became most apparent to me that we are facing a crisis of incompetence here. Not the moment Dylan Taylor was shot, but it began centuries before. I'm not going to talk about that. So, I've seen what happened with Darian Hunt, after what happened with Dylan Taylor. I've read about what happened with Danielle Willard, and the crisis continued and continues, and it became clear when Abdi was shot, without a chance to respond to the officer. I see my brother now, my little brother, going through a punk phase. He turns on Nirvana, puts in his headphones, and walks down to 7-Eleven to get a Slurpee. He's a neighborhood kid, and every time he leaves, I think, "My God, what if you were The crisis of incompetence needs to be addressed. The crisis, to be clear, is in the fact that the very organization, or the cronies of the organization, who are responsible for the deaths, for the shootings, for every instance of brutality, are ultimately the ones who determine whether or not these incidents of brutality are to see proper justice. How can we expect anything equitable out of that? The only conclusion is, we need the people, the community, who is affected by police brutality, to be in charge of determining what is and what isn't justice in response to police brutality.
Thank you, Mr. Patorius. Preston Perez Erickson, followed by Amerika Phillips, or Emmerich Phillips, sorry.
My name is Preston Perez Erickson, and I'm here to be counted among the growing movement of citizens who are no longer merely anxiously concerned, but are angered and enraged over the behavior and conduct of so-called law enforcement, local and otherwise. Yet tonight, right now, we focus on the tragic misuse and abuse of force and authority of the Salt Lake Police Department, most recently in the shooting of Abdi Mohammed. We are here demanding justice for Abdi, as we demand justice for others who find themselves victims of the mal-adaption of a justice system that is supposed to protect and serve, but through example, systemically exercises injustice towards minorities and others who are prejudged by that system, and which is made manifest in the guns and bullets of its officers. But we are here to say enough, no more. We do recognize these tragedies as a deplorable symptom of a larger internally systemic disease, which needless to say, requires a cure. We are here tonight to demand that the council do its part, and you can expect our help in aiding this, as we are in this together. The council need not wait for this to hit home in some way to know this fact. Rest assured that we, the people, demanding community control right now, will continue, and continue, and continue to remind you of your vested interest in finding justice for Abdi Mohammed, Darian Hunt, and any and every other victim of these injustices. Otherwise, we, the people, can and will bring to pass the cure on our own, and in a way the council and the police themselves may not prefer.
Time.
The council would do well to partner with us, we who are the reason for your civil service, and I call upon the people to remind our civil servants, if they do not give us justice, we do not give them peace.
Thank you, Mr. Perez Erickson. Emmerich Phillips, followed by, oh, two cards for Emmerich Phillips, William Van Wagenen.
Okay. Hi.
Hi, good evening. My name is Emmerich Phillips. I am a student at West High School, and I am here today to not have you validate my experience, nor other witnesses of the event between Abdi and the police officer that fateful night. Today, I am here to ask for your impartial review of the necessity of a citizens' review board. We spend so much time and placing so much of an emphasis on protecting police from public opinion that we forget to protect our own citizens, namely, black and brown youth. In 2005, only, since 2005, only 13 officers have been convicted of murder or manslaughter on duty. So what are we, so what public opinion are we protecting the police from? Even when we have countering opinions on police brutality, police still walk. So in the event of releasing the body camera, I ask that we do not continue to protect police from public opinion, and what I personally call "public criticism." Personally, Jackie, Ms. Jackie, I saw you at a West Winds event in the summer of last year, and I recognized that your children were black. And when I saw them, I wondered how you were preparing them for the possible race relations that they could have in this society. Personally, your priority is not this council, it's not this city, but your children. So consider the citizens' review board a personal investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. William Van Wagenen, followed by Karen Rodriguez.
Again, my name is Will Van Wagenen. I live here in Salt Lake. About a year ago, when I was walking home just from a coffee shop where I live in Avenues, and I couldn't get back to my house because the whole block was cordoned off, and it turns out that James Barker had been shot just two doors down from where I live in Avenues. Also work at a financial firm here in Salt Lake City, and our offices are at the gateway. And again, just about two weeks ago, as you guys know, the young man, Abdi Mohammed, was shot just a block from my office. And it's just really apparent to me that the police here in Salt Lake City and in Utah generally are out of control. There's a lot of people who've been shot and killed, innocent people who've been shot and killed recently in the last couple of years. I'm sure you've heard their names before from people who've spoken already, but Darian Hunt, Dylan Taylor, Corey Kinnage. These are white people being shot, there are black people being shot, Native Americans being shot, and it's really just getting out of control. And you, as the city council and as the mayor, you have an opportunity to try to hold the police accountable and put a stop to these killings. It's so important that you guys take action and take the recommendations of all the people here to try to make the police accountable. You really do have the chance to save lives, and I just really, again, appreciate all the people who've come out tonight to demand that. But again, it's in your hands. We're doing all we can to try and put pressure and convince you. There's going to be pressure from the police department for you guys not to take these measures, not to make them accountable. There might be pressure from other politicians here in Salt Lake City, but please, do the right thing. You really do have the chance to save lives in your position on the city council, and if you don't take action, there are going to be more people just like the young men that I just mentioned, who are going to be shot for no reason, who are going to be killed for no reason by the police in Salt Lake City and in Utah generally. So please, take some action.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wagenen. Karen Rodriguez, followed by Jordan Hill.
Hi, I'm Karen Rodriguez. I am a legal intern at ACLU, and I am also the president of the NAACP at the University of Utah. And I am here to let you know about a couple of events. So right now, we're working on a case from 2010 in West High School. Police officers came into the school and identified students of color, mainly black and Latino, and two students are of Polynesian descent, and made them self-identify and enter their names into a database as gangsters. Now, this is, for lack of a proper term to make white people look good, racism. This is what we're dealing with. This is what we're asking you, as our city council members, to do, is learn to stand in solidarity with us and actually help fight this big elephant in the room, which is racism. You are one, two, three, four, five, six men that get to stand on there. Three women who are also white. But as white males, you have the privilege to have your word be heard, and you have every single power in your hands to make things better for us people of color, to stand in solidarity with us today. I agree with them about the body cameras. However, with Darian Hunt, a lot of that footage, about 10 seconds of it, which is a lot when he got shot, was deleted. So if you do decide to make this a priority on your list and release that footage, I urge you to please demand that they release it in full. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Jordan Hill, and then I'm going to give Alyssa Ferris one more chance, if Alyssa is here.
Hello, my name is Jordan Hill, and as many of the public gathered here tonight, you can see that we have an apparent issue. While I do not feel that the Salt Lake Police are racist, I do feel that the citizens of Salt Lake deserve respect as individuals and as a community. As we sit here tonight, there's a young boy in a hospital bed, and as you tuck your kids into bed at night, Abdi's family clings to hope that he'll once again be as he was. As we sit here tonight, there's injustice happening on our streets. This is our community, and I refuse to stand by while this occurs. Many of us are angry, but we need to handle this rationally. There needs to be a democratically-elected community control to handle these instances and hold those accountable for their actions. Not only has there been injustice for Abdi, the general public, but also the homeless community. They are no less of a human being than you or I, and they do not deserve to be dehumanized and bulked as a mass group of potential criminals. I beg of you to take a stand, because no action at all is condoning the action of the police. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. And is Alyssa Ferris one more time? Don't see Alyssa. Is there anybody that would like to speak that has not filled out a card? Okay. So if you could fill the cards out, pass them over to the staff and bring them forward. I did see someone that did have a card. Okay, and if I could get one of you who is going to fill something out, if you want to start speaking now and then fill your card out after, that would be fine. And I also want to thank all of you who are here for attending tonight, but also for following the council rules and decorum. We really appreciate it, so.
Hi, my name's Rose, and I'm not with anybody. I just had a couple of things I wanted to say. I honestly don't feel like, at this point, it's a race thing. I do feel like it's a police brutality thing. Unarmed citizens are being gunned down. Like, we can't even protect ourselves. Like, how would you feel to be in a position where you cannot protect yourself? Someone with a gun shoot you four times. How would you feel? You don't have anything in your hands to defend yourself, but as American citizens, we have that right to defend ourselves. That's what, the Second Amendment right, correct? So we don't even have that right against police to do that. So what gives you the right, because you have a badge, to violate someone else's basic civil rights? It doesn't make any sense. Wrong is wrong, and we all know the difference between right and wrong. So you cannot justify someone's wrong action. You are shooting an unarmed individual. I don't care about the race. I don't care about the sex of the person. They are unarmed and unable to protect themselves. We are afraid of the people put in a position to protect us. That does not make any sense. That's all I have to say.
Good. Thank you. And then after Josh, Darren Mann.
Thank you for listening to our comments. I do appreciate it, and I hope that it doesn't fall upon deaf ears and that it does lead to some resolution and some action. I can't help but notice that I, maybe I'm, you know, ignorant or unknowing of the facts, but I appreciate you guys sitting here, but I don't see a lot of diversity, and I don't imagine, and I don't know all of you, so I can't say this properly, but I don't see a lot of diff, I imagine that there's not a whole lot of economic, racial, or religious diversity in here, and I would like one, just for community representation of all the different members that make up our city. And as far as the whole police brutality and the misaction and misconduct by the police, I would love to see us move to a mutual trust between police and citizens where there was cooperation in pursuit of justice and equality. My understanding was that police was about law enforcement, not as, you know, trial, juror, and executioner. You know, and, you know, unfortunately, when citizens are gunned down, they lose those rights that are guaranteed in the Constitution. There seems to be a lack of transparency, and we would love to see that video, not just for comfort, but also just for accountability. If the officer was following his training and doing nothing wrong, then that will show that he is, you know, innocent as far as the police conduct goes. However, if he misacted or was too quick to resort to a lethal force instead of other means of de-escalating the situation, then he should be held accountable. If not for homicide, at least for manslaughter. Obviously, we all want justice. I would love some accountability. And this comes from fear of my future children, as I am, you know, involved in an interracial marriage. What type of future will they be growing up in?
Time?
I hope that you consider that, as well as all the other words that were much more eloquent spoken by other people today.
Thank you, Mr. Kohler. Darren Mann, followed by Noah Potts, and Noah's is the last card that I have.
My heart goes out to Abdi and many others that have suffered to police brutality, but I think what this represents is an opportunity for you to stand in solidarity with us, with your community, because at the end of the day, you are brothers and sisters of the same community. So we need to make progress. Please don't let these yearnings that people have spoken so, with such a heartfelt manner, to just fall upon deaf ears. Please, make some progress. Let's lift the bar for police, and maybe they have a higher standard of training, because right now, it is not efficient. They are not capable to deal with the situations that they are presented with, and it is not acceptable for, you know, a young boy's life to be shortened or taken, even if he may come out of it. It is not, you know, we, our citizens should not have to fear those that are meant to guide and protect us, and that is the job of police officers. So please, stand with us and don't be an obstacle, because a great man once said that the administration should not fear the criticism of its society, for that is how democracy can grow. That great man was JFK, and you have an opportunity to follow his example of being a stalwart example of justice, and you can stand with the people, and you will have nothing to fear. We will embrace you because you stood for justice. But if you don't, I can't, you may have something to fear, and you will not stand in office for very long. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Noah Potts.
I am actually a 17-year-old high school student, and I want to emphasize, if it isn't already emphasized enough for you, how important this is. If I, part of the generation who really does not care anything political, is here tonight, and I drove an hour and 20 minutes to get here, to show you how important this is. Today is actually the Worldwide Day Against Police Brutality, and if you do not take action like a democratically-elected community council, I challenge you tonight to research what's going on in Montreal, in LA, in South Africa, and see what happens when police brutality goes unchecked. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potts. That was the last card. I think there are a couple. Okay?
Hi, my name is Francesca Ball, and I appreciate the opportunity for letting me speak tonight. I didn't have any comments prepared, but I feel it's important to not only be another body here to talk about the need for a democratically-elected review board when something like this, that happened with Abdi, happens between a civilian and the police, but to also be a voice. And so I ask, I want to live in a community that I can be proud of, and I want to live in a community where I no longer fear the police, but for once believe that they are truly there to protect me, other people of color, and people of all different walks of life, not just those who appear to be upstanding citizens with wealth and good standing within our community. I would also like to call that full footage from any incident like Abdi's, like with Darian Hunt, be released the week that it happens, full footage, not edited. Again, the civilian review board, elected by the citizens, and a board that has the power to make decisions about how the officer in question should be dealt with. There needs to be accountability, and we, as citizens, urge you to stand behind that. That's why we have elected you. Please, do your job. Be there for us, the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. And Paulina's is the last card.
Good evening, Councilman Jackie. I didn't have anything prepared tonight, but just to not request, I'm actually demanding, we are demanding, people who are not present, wish they could be here, are demanding that the footage of Abdi Mohammed is released in full, not edited. I as well agree that we should have a citizen review board that we elect. And I just want to say that, when did protect and serve, or, how do I phrase this? When did, when do we have to be, I'm, sorry, I'm, I suppose I'm just very frustrated. I feel the way that many others who have spoken before me feel. We should not have to be afraid. The Salt Lake City Police Department works for us. We do not work for them. Why do I have to comply or die? I don't think that that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lovato. Alyssa Ferris. Third time is a charm. And then followed by, or Alyssa Ferris is going to be followed by Dr. David Parker.
Hi, everybody. I am here as a member of Utah Against Police Brutality, adding my voice to the chorus of many, many voices, asking for a democratically-controlled community review board. I am sick of feeling scared for my life every time I see a police officer who sits on their car, says there to serve and protect me, but I know that them having a gun and a badge means a license to kill at will. The police haven't given the chance to police themselves, and they have shown time and time again that they will not do so. I would like to also ask for footage of body cameras to be made to the public. They were put there so that police, they were put there to promote transparency, but if the footage is not released, it completely defeats the purpose. I would like to thank you for hearing what I have to say, and I just add, again, my voice to the chorus, the voice of saying, "Black Lives Matter."
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. Dr. David Parker.
I've been listening all evening to people talking about anger. I've been listening all evening to people, asking people to pay attention to them. I've been listening all evening to people saying to the mayor, they're glad that there's a new mayor here, and it's, things are different. Things need to change, yes. What I'm wondering is, what does change look like? What does change look like? I am the chair of the Police Department, the Police Department, the Police Department. Tomorrow, we're having a meeting at the police station with the police chief to talk about what change looks like. There's a lot of things to be angry about. There's a lot of things to ask you to do differently, but we need to put some concrete words to what change looks like. So I'm asking So I'm asking you, if you have time, at 2:00, meet me at the police station with Chief Brown, and we can talk about what does change look like. So the next time you talk, we'll have a concrete list of things of what change looks like, and therefore, it's not as frustrating to just ask, to expend our energy talking about the need for change, but let's give some words to it, so we know what it looks like. Thank you for listening to everybody talking to you tonight, and please, sleep well when you go home. Salt Lake City Police Department, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Having no further cards, again, thank you all for participating tonight. We're going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is Item E, New Business. Under E1, My Place 2016 Extension. Look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the extension.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion to this issue? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item E2, Cannibal County Affordable Housing Project, the Bodai Apartments. As, as, excuse me, as you're exiting the room, the meeting is still continuing, so we'd ask you to exit quietly and have your conversations in the hall. Thank you. I'll look for a motion on the Bodai Apartments project.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the resolution.
Okay, so a move by Councilmember.
Second.
Penfold, seconded by Councilmember Kitchen. Any discussion to this?
Yeah.
Councilmember Johnston.
I, uh, well, I'm going to vote against it. And it pains me to do it, because I know how deeply we need affordable housing. I know how deeply we need more housing, just blank, period, I mean. But I don't have a clear understanding of how we are going to surround this development and make it really integrated into the community. And until we have more public outreach to the community as well, to help them understand this and see if they have more of a desire to support it, I can't do it, so.
To Councilmember Johnston, other comments? Councilmember Rogers.
If I might, I'm actually going to vote against this as well. And it's not this project in general, it's just that you're going to see in the queue four or five other projects that are the exact same scenario. It's 20% market rate, 80% affordable housing, and that is continuing to target the west side of Salt Lake City with completely the opposite agenda that we've discussed, with 80% market rate and 20% affordable housing. So I'm along with Andrew Johnston in this, that I am going to vote no on this motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to roll call this. We'll start with Councilmember Rogers.
No.
Councilmember Johnston?
No.
Councilmember Penfold?
Yes.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendenhall?
No.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So the motion passes four to three. The next item on the agenda is E3, Legislative Intent Request Review of the city's demolition Look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the council adopt legislative action initiating a review of the city's demolition ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rogers, seconded by Councilmember Mendenhall. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. E4, Temporary Land Use Regulations, Parking Standards for Government Offices in the D1 Zone.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the temporary regulations.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, seconded by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion to this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item E5, Board Appointment to the Housing Authority Board, David Litback.
Mr. Chair, I move we suspend the rules and adopt the appointment.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, seconded by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion to this appointment?
Get ready.
With that being the only discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now, we are on Item F, Unfinished Business. Item F1, The Advising Consent Process.
I don't have a motion sheet.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think any of us.
No, I think I've got one.
Do you have one?
I've got a great stack of papers here.
There are motions in the staff report. My apologies for, it's not, sorry, it's not called out in a separate sheet, it's on.
So does someone have their unhacked staff report?
I can do. You know what? No, I can't find it. Okay, I got a motion.
Okay. Councilmember Mendenhall.
Well, shucks, I don't have it in motion format, but I have, I have some options. Should I go ahead with the options and read it as stated?
So the motions are listed just after the chart that lays out options?
I don't have that. I have a chart that is the end.
No, no, not the email, sorry, it was in the staff report.
Do you have a copy with you right there?
I do.
Can you hand us that copy?
Our internet went down today, folks. Yeah, the internet. Paper is all we have. Thanks.
Thanks, Jennifer.
I move the council adopt ordinance option B, Enacting Chapter 2.05 of the City Code Relating to Appointments in Departments of Department Heads and Statutory Officers.
Is that it? Because I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Mendenhall, seconded by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Item F2, The Property Exchange with Salt Lake County.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if I might get a clarification on this one from staff. I know that there was a couple of requests for additional information, and I believe we got some conditions placed on our interlocal that were sufficient to address that. Who were you able to reach the citizens concerned with process?
I don't know totally. What I'll say is, is that the constituent concern was whether or not, for the other senior centers, there should be a right of first refusal for the city to have an option on that property, should the county choose to sell it. During the council's conversations about the interlocal that related to that property exchange, it was added to the Sunday Anderson property, but not to the 10th East or the Liberty property. And so there was, there was some reasoning. My understanding and recollection of the council's discussion is that there was some reasoning to not include a right of first refusal on those two properties. But at this point, the contract with the county for the exchange of the properties has been drafted and approved by the county council and the city council, and so changing that could happen if it were the will of the administration here at the city and at the county. But the contract is signed, as is, without that right of first refusal on those two properties at Liberty and 10th East. Is that, so wasn't, it's not that the citizens' concerns have been addressed, but they, in terms of being resolved in a way that she's pleased with, but they have been addressed in terms of.
So I guess the question then becomes, one of the, one of the questions was whether or not to schedule a public hearing on this issue, and I'm.
And to that, a public hearing wouldn't change that fact at all.
So that's what I'm wondering. I mean, I don't want to provide an opportunity for people to become more frustrated if we've already got a signed agreement in place.
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Yeah, Cindy.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, please, go ahead.
Maybe I could just offer a little bit of additional information. That is that there was an accommodation requested from the county on the senior center on the west side and a different accommodation requested on the senior center on the east side. So each of those accommodations was agreed to by the county and by the city administration, but they were not the same. They were different accommodations. The one on the east side allowed for more park space. The one on the west side was the right of first refusal, so that.
So and I think that, I think that, please, and you can help me, the original concern was actually the property on the east side that did not include an option for a right of first refusal. But it sounds like there, that that possibility of an option may have been eliminated in the process so far. Is that correct?
Eliminated in that the contract has been finalized and that the part of the process was to do an evaluation of the value for the properties to be exchanged, and the accommodation that was made on that 10th East property was taken into consideration in terms of what it did to the value that the county was receiving in that property.
When we were evaluating the exchange value.
So are we just looking for a motion, then, to?
Yeah, to approve, it sounds like, or not approve.
Or are we looking for a motion to not hold another administrative hearing on the conveyance of the five properties?
Right.
Okay, so I'll make that motion, and I move the council not request an additional administrative hearing on the conveyance of these five properties.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rogers, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. At this point, I just want to say that if tonight is any indication of the type of service that Senator May and Bob Bergman are going to be providing to the airport board, the fact that you've been able to patiently wait for at this point of the agenda, I think the airport board is in good hands, so thank you very much for that. I'll look for a motion on Item G, Consent.
I move, second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Rogers, seconded by Councilmember Penfold. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The consent agenda is passed, and we are adjourned.